Hi folks, this is What's New Westford, the podcast where we talk about what's happening here in Westford. I'm Steve from Westford Cat, here with our news director Joyce Paulino Crane.
Hello.
And joining us today is Westford resident Bill Taffel.
Hello.
At the recording controls today, we have Nick Woodbury. Thanks, Nick. Before we start, I have a quick correction to last week's podcast. When we discussed the nine eleven Candlelight Memorial, we said that it was hosted by the Girl Scouts, but it was actually hosted by the Westford Museum and the Girl Scouts were participants. Thanks to everyone who is keeping us honest on that. The stories on today's rundown are convertible cars, domestic violence, and participation at town meeting. Links will be in the description and feel free to tell us what you think about these stories in the comments. So Joyce, what's new in Westford?
The first story I start, I have been noticing as I drive by Westford Auto Sales that there are more and more classic cars appearing on the lot. And I had done a story on Buddy Claire years ago when I was the editor of The Eagle. And I thought maybe he'd be receptive to another story and he was. He showed up without calling first and he just, you know, took me around, showed me the cars, gave me the inside scoop. And it was really fascinating and the way, the reason why I wrote this story was because I've been noticing since the pandemic ended or hopefully ended. There have been a lot of convertibles going around Westford Common. And I, I looked for some statistics and found a little bit of, a little bit of information that said, you know, convertibles are more popular now than they had been in the past. And if you keep an eye out, you'll see a number of couples around town with two seat, a brand new two seater Thunderbird. Beautiful cars and I'd love to get a ride in one. But yeah, so that was, that was the first story. And thank you Buddy Claire for helping.
Well, and that's, that's the car place down on 225 and 110, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, there are a lot fewer cars over there these days. It's a getting hard to find a car.
Well, a lot fewer cars, yes, for used cars to buy and, and use as a a tool for getting around town. He's got more classic cars out there now. And that's what he's using it for.
Well, I always noticed the classic cars when I drive by that corner. I haven't really noticed whether there are more or less of them, but I do notice convertibles around and I've always wondered why you would drive a convertible on the highway. I can see people driving them around town, but it seems to me it's not all that pleasant to be in particular, well, either the front seat or the backseat on the highway, but that's just one person's opinion.
No, I agree with you. What are your thoughts?
And so it makes sense to me, like being in the pandemic and all that you would want an open air car because the open air is better than confined spaces these days. But I would agree that, that if you're driving down to Boston, I don't really want to be on the highway with the top down. I've, I've driven in a convertible, I've ridden in a convertible a couple of times and it's, it's kind of like being on a roller coaster with the wind rushing past your face and some people are fine with that. To me, it's a little uncomfortable.
It's a little tough to hear anybody else talking either.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I remember getting a ride in a convertible with my cousin when I was very young. And I was so excited. I couldn't wait for the car to start and we could, you know, roll. And then I realized I was not cut out for convertibles. I couldn't wait for the trip to be over. But you know, other people I think are really enjoying it. And I do think it's symbolic, you know, the pandemic ended and we're in these outdoor cars. So.
Has the pandemic ended? I don't know. We're all sitting here wearing masks.
Yeah.
The Board of Health just passed their mandate last night. We're recording this on Thursday.
Yes, that all, anyone entering any town building must wear a mask. Is that the new rule?
Well, no, that was the one that they passed last month. I think this one, this new one is a townwide mask mandate. And that's, that's, that's why I was saying that we should wear the masks for this podcast today is because I think everybody's required to wear a mask now. If you're leaving your house and going somewhere that's not an open air location. I, I think that's what their, their ruling was.
Well, so be it. Wear the masks. The second story is a topic very near and dear to my own heart and something I support. The Live for Live fundraiser is ongoing this week, I think through October 3rd. You can take a bike ride or take a run on your own. It's not, there's not a, there isn't an event this year. But if you do the bike ride or you do the run and you, and you register, you'll be, you'll be part of the giving group that this organization needs. They're working towards having enough money to have an apartment. And if somebody like, you know, with children perhaps, needs a safe place to live. Hopefully the Live for Live Foundation will someday in the near future be able to provide that. Domestic violence, just, it doesn't get enough airtime, but if you listen carefully to local reports, you know, there's, it seems like there's a, a female a month, every month, someone is being harmed or killed at the hands of someone who they love. And it's, it, it just is a very upsetting situation to think about. Jody Marshand, as many know in this town, was critically injured, police say by her husband, Brian Marshand. She was critically injured. Her 17 year old teenage daughter, Olivia, was killed and then the father, you know, turned the gun on himself. So it was, you know, very traumatic for the town. We, I do think the town has healed, but there's so much work to be done. And I would just say, if you can register at liveforlive.com, I believe it is, I'll check that. If you could, if you could just take a moment, register, give some money, take a bike ride, whatever, whatever you feel you want to do to participate, it would be very much appreciated.
Well, and this is coming up in relation to the, the situation that's caught national attention, right? With the, sorry, I forget the names, but the woman who was presumably murdered by her boyfriend, fiance?
It's her fiance. Yes, thank you, Steve. So Gabby Petito and Brian Laundrie are the couple that everyone is, you know, has been watching and talking about. Unfortunately, Gabby, Gabby's body was found in some state park, I believe, or I don't know, National Park. They've been on this route of traveling around the western parts of the state of the country, Utah, maybe Wyoming and another, and she and he were involved, it appears, although I must say, Brian Laundrie has not been charged with the crime. He is listed as a person of interest in this matter. But he is missing. The police do not know where he is. And her body has been found. And there are reports from people who did see them prior to this tragedy. They saw Brian slapping Gabby allegedly and other, I guess there's been some very, you know, some behavior that is not what you see between two people who love each other.
Yeah. And I saw something on, online earlier, a couple of days ago, saying that, I guess the family, her family has come out and kind of objected to the, the, the language being used to describe him and saying that he's, he's not missing, he's on the run. That they are, they are convinced that he's responsible. And, you know, it doesn't seem like he's acting like somebody who's innocent. So he hasn't been charged with anything yet, but I think it's, it's pretty clear whodunit. And we need to find him and find out the details. And hopefully we find him before he gets over the border.
Yeah. So it's just a very upsetting story.
I haven't really followed that story, but I do remember the cases in Westford. And I think all three of them, I think it's just the tip of the iceberg really. And I think this reflects a much bigger and deeper problem.
It is so, it is so hard to face that. Yes, you're right.
And hard to know what the solution is.
It's very hard to know what the solution is. I have a theory that sometimes if you can get two people who are very angry at each other apart for an evening. So what I had hoped we could do at some point was, were broker some kind of agreement with local hotels? That if there's someone who needs to be put in a hotel to stay safe for just one night, that we could do that without being charged or we could work some kind of financial agreement out. Just anything to get two people who are very angry, very ripped up apart for the night. That's really, I think, a critical action that we could be taking in, here in Westford. You know, we lost Karen Ledoux, we lost Olivia Marshand. These are very serious matters and, you know, we can't turn our heads away from it. We have to fix it.
Have you yourself been involved in the Live for Live, Live for Live?
Foundation? Yes, I have. I was, I sat on the board for several years. And I'm taking a break from that, but yes, I, I've been involved. I mean, more so through Jody, we, you know, I, she's, we're, we're very close. I think of her as a very warm friend and I, you know, have had the privilege of hearing her story many times.
As we've, we've had her, you've, you've hosted her in the studio a couple of times. And for, for listeners at home, if you want more information about this, you can look up these videos on our YouTube channel and get more information. Thanks for listening. Before we continue, I have a couple of quick announcements. Westford's special town meeting has had its date and location moved. It will now be held Saturday, October 16th on the WA Football Field at 1:00 PM. Westford Cat is participating in Roden Bush's Townwide Yard Sale on Abbott School Field this Saturday, September 25th. This is a fundraiser for the station, so please support us by stopping by to say hello and see what's for sale. And also, Westford Cat is working with students from Westford Academy to record and broadcast high school sports. On Friday, September 24th, WA will be hosting Concord Carlisle for a football game and will be broadcasting live on YouTube and our TV channel starting at 7:00 PM. Now we're going to take a quick break and come back for more after a word from our station.
Westford Cat is more than just television. We have the equipment and knowledge to help you get started as an independent media creator. Find us on YouTube for local news, Westford Academy Sports and media content created by Westford Neighbors and Friends. Or look up our website at westfordcat.org for details about the station and how to get involved. Funding for local media is on the decline, so if you appreciate our work, please become a member of the station or make a tax deductible donation to support local media. Links are in the description. Thanks for tuning in.
We're back with more news and discussion. Just a quick reminder, links to these stories are in the description if you want more information. So Bill, the next item is your letter to the editor. So why don't you tell us what's on your mind?
Well, the fundamental issue here is, is enabling more people to cast their vote on the articles that are on the warranted town meeting. And for a number of years, I've felt that town meeting itself is very limited. Participation is only at most a few hundred people. When there are thousands, 20 odd thousand people living in the town and I don't know how many thousand registered voters, but.
Seventeen thousand at my last count.
Seventeen thousand, so a lot more than a few hundred. And, and I also observed, I went back and I looked at the attendance records for about the past 20 years. And could see that about five times as many people on average voted at the polls as attended town meeting. And so it occurred to me at that time, which was back in 2015, that there might be a way to enable people to vote on the Warren articles at the polls without attending town meeting. And I looked into this at that time and I discovered that it was not as simple as I thought. In that there are some restrictions at the state level as to how you can operate. But I did make a proposal to the selectmen in, I think, October of 2015, which was, what I guess I would say was dismissed. And I put it on the back burner until the pandemic began, at which time I also once again suggested that then might be a good time to think about enabling people to vote without attending a large meeting. And at that time I was told that it was actually the state that, that I don't know if they opposed that, but they said you couldn't do it.
There is a law, though, the way I understand it is there's a state law that says that in order to vote at town meeting, you have to be physically present because 2,000 years ago, when law was written, how, how else could you do it?
Yeah. So in any event, when, when I saw in the agendas of the, the select, the board of select board meeting? That, that there were, a committee was being formed to look at how to get more people to attend town meeting. It seemed to me that that was an excellent time to bring the issue up again and see whether we might be able to do something. Acknowledging that there are a lot of obstacles, but also recognizing that probably every town in the Commonwealth has the same problem. A relative handful of people attend the town meeting. They, they tend to be the same people meeting after meeting. They tend to be older people because it's more difficult for younger people to spend the whole day in a meeting. And decisions are made by, in the end, only a few people. Whereas there are many people in the town who would like to have their vote counted, but who for one reason or another can't attend the town meeting or they can't sit all day long waiting for their, their issue to come up. And it seems like it's a, a thing that may be due for a change. Again, acknowledging that it would require a change at the state level. But given that it's a statewide problem, it seems that that would not be impossible.
Well, and so one, one direction that I've investigated a little bit, because there, there is that state law, I know there's a mechanism to get around state laws, which is called a home rule petition, which basically lets us write our own rule that, that then we get it approved by the Massachusetts Legislature and it, it kind of lets us play by, play ball by our own rules. And I'm, one of the things that I want to investigate with this committee is whether we could use a home rule petition to enable remote participation at town meeting just for Westford as kind of maybe like a pilot program. And then if we have success with it, then we can be the model for other towns in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I did, again, back in 2015, I spoke to John Giorgio, who was, at the time, he may still be a town council.
I believe he still is.
And, and he gave me some explanation about that particular process. Back then it didn't really go anywhere. But I mean, I think that it's a good, good opportunity to revisit and to look at what the options are.
So what are they? What are some of the ideas of how would you do that? How would you implement that?
Well, when I proposed this back in 2015, there were a couple of issues that were brought up that I thought were, were real issues. One was actually brought up by Don Sirianni, who was a selectman at the time, who said, what if the town? My, my theory was you could have the town meeting itself. And then, and you'd have votes taken there, but they would not be final until maybe a week later, you'd have a vote at the polls and people could cast their ballots and then you tally them all up and you'd see what the result was. He raised the, the point that what if people at the polls rejected the town budget? Then the, the town as a whole would have no idea really why it was rejected and how to fix it. And so could kind of spiral down and wind up entering the next fiscal year with no budget. So that, that caused me to think a little and, and I went back and I looked at about five years worth of town meetings. And I identified a relative handful of articles, which in my opinion, you really had to resolve at the town meeting. So that would be the first point is I'd set aside and the budget would be one of them, which is a big one, by the way. But, but there were only a handful of articles like that and many other articles, some of which are quite significant, that really don't have that same kind of time pressure. So I thought you could make that separation, first of all. And then second is the issue of amendments made, demotions at the town meeting. And my thinking on that was if you were going to want to make an amendment, or if you were going to want to change an article, you had to go to town meeting. You know, there was no, at least in a first phase, no getting around that. If you wanted to do certain things, if you wanted to vote on the budget, if you wanted to, to make an amendment to an article, you had to go to town meeting. A week later, when the vote comes up at the polls, you would vote, people not going to the town meeting would be able to vote on the articles as they came out of the town meeting, in whatever form they came out of the town meeting. Which seemed to me address those two issues. So I think, I think procedurally, I think that could work. I think it's more a matter of is there the interest in the will in the town to do that, number one? And number two, can we navigate through either that home rule process or, or whatever process may be available to make such a change for Westford only? And then failing that, is it something that, that Westford could take part in leading a, a change at the state level? Which I would think a lot of towns would support.
When I, I looked into this a little bit back in 2018, I had a slightly different set of ideas, but kind of same, same general goal. And I ran into similar issues that, that everybody that I talked to felt like there just wasn't going to be enough political willpower to make the necessary changes. And I think that with the pandemic, everybody's gotten used to remote meetings and participating from home. And I, I think there, there may be a shift in sentiment towards participating from, from your couch or wherever you're, whether you're going to the polls, rather than actually sitting down through a whole day of town meeting. I mean, we have Westford Cat broadcasts all of, all of our town meetings. If you're not trying to participate in the discussion, but just want to hear what's going on, that's a perfectly good way to kind of follow the meeting. But it doesn't let you vote. And I know there have been some folks who have talked about a strategy of, well, if, if there's one or two articles that I really care about, I'll watch the meeting on Westford Cat for a couple of hours until we get to that point in the meeting. And then when that's coming up, I'll go to the meeting and check in and cast my vote for just that one, one part. But that's, that's not helping us meet the quorum if we have a special town meeting when you have to have two people, 200 people to open the meeting. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not really a solution. It's a Band-Aid.
Yeah. I, I think it's going to be very difficult to increase the participation at town meeting to a thousand members from the relatively few hundred that we tend to have these days. And I think we could go another, around another loop of trying to do that and changing the date and changing the time and doing all these various things. I don't think it's going to solve the problem because I think there are real problems that prevent people from going to town meeting. One of it is just the length and the arduousness of the town meeting. That a lot of people are just, I mean, for example, I think there'd be many seniors in town, of which there are many to begin with, who physically are not able to sit there in a room for the whole day and listen to all these articles, just in order so they can cast their vote. And I think the same applies to a lot of young families with children, a lot of people who, who are traveling on business. I think there are just many, many issues which didn't used to exist when the concept of the town meeting was originated, that I think are in the way now. I think that the sooner that they get recognized, the sooner and dealt with, I think the sooner you'll have more participation in making decisions at the town level. It has been said, in fact, it was said back at that selectmen's meeting, that if people really were interested in a particular article, they'd get to the town meeting. I, I personally don't think much of that argument. I, I don't, I don't think that we need to create obstacles and put them in front of people in order to get them to test their, their level of interest to vote. In my view, we should make it easy for people to vote. I think most people have opinions on most of the topics. And, and everyone knows you can watch these meetings on, on YouTube or on Westford Cat. And I don't, I, I don't think that, I don't think we need to worry that much about people voting uninformed or not really caring that much in voting.
Well, I think a, a good example of, of what you're talking about is the, the issue with drive-throughs in town. And that a lot of the people who are for it are not strongly for it. It's something that they'd like to see, but they're, they don't seem like they're going to go out of their way to make it happen. Whereas the people who are against it are very against it. And even though it seems like they're the smaller group, they're the ones who show up to town meeting. And so you, you might have a different outcome on some of those, some of those more controversial articles where there's broad support, but not strong support.
I, I think there might be a lot of things that would come out differently if, if people could vote without attending that meeting. My purpose really in, in putting this letter out there was not so much to initiate the change because having tried a couple of times, I could see that was going to be a significant effort. But it was really to, to try and sense out to what extent do people in the community at large feel anything about this or feel strongly about it? And all I, I'd have to say, there was not a lot of response to the letter itself that I saw anyway. But pretty much everyone that I have talked to in town for, for a number of years and have suggested the idea to, has, has supported it. So I think there's a lot of support out there. I, I think it would be good, maybe through this committee that's being formed, which you're on, Steve.
Yep. We're having our first meeting tonight.
To, to look into that and to see what level of support there is for doing that. And, and if there is support in town here, then to see what level of support there is statewide. And just one more comment I mentioned in the letter, but, but 24 years ago in 1997, the Massachusetts Association of Town Moderators did a study. They formed a committee of their own. They did a study looking at, at voting, presumably at the polls, but voting independent at town meeting without having to go to town meeting. And although they came down against the proposal, the list of reasons that they gave as problems was exactly the same list that, that I would cite today. In fact, I do cite it today. One of the big ones being that particularly in this day and age, a lot of people are not that comfortable standing up in public, either saying something or making their feeling known when some of these meetings get to be so contentious. And, and the thing I would add is I've attended some of those meet, I've attended a lot of those meetings and I've presented at them and I've brought motions up at the meetings. But in recent years, some of those meetings have been really unpleasant and, and I would have to say bordering on not very civil. And I can see why your average person would shy away from attending a meeting where, you know, it might devolve into sort of a chaotic and unpleasant situation like that.
Well, and I, I think I've noticed a little bit of that kind of across the board with government meetings ever since we came back to in-person meetings after the pandemic started to cool down and, and things opened up and, and they started going back to town hall and Millennium School for their meetings. People who have showed up have been a little more heated, a little bit more argumentative if they have a controversial item to talk about than what I remember from in-person meetings before. And, and I don't know if that's just a, a sign of the times, if everybody's a little bit stressed. But I think there are definitely some arguments in favor of the, having people be able to participate without all being in a room together.
I guess I would appeal to anyone who's listening to this to get in touch with somebody who's on that committee. And, and make your opinion known. And I, I think there's a lot of interest, which just isn't visible. And I think it would be good to make it visible if it does exist. The name of the committee is what? Do you fill out the top area?
Oh, it's, it's a mouthful. The, the committee to study attendance at town meet, I don't, I don't, I don't think we have a good acronym for it.
Some, yeah, it has a long name, but it's basically about, it's a committee of about 20 people, it seems to me, to, to look at ways to increase attendance at town meeting. And I think. And I think, uh, chances are you'll know somebody on that committee since it's so large. I think if you have an opinion, I, I would let it be known to them. So that they, when they, first meeting is tonight, Steve tells me.
First meeting is tonight.
That, uh, you know, they can discuss these things.
So we'll organize and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll get some public contacts out and we'll open up a way for people to submit their comments and tell us what they think.
I think you would find a lot of interest.
I've had a little bit of this discussion on my, uh, ten minute citizen Facebook page, and I've gotten very good responses on there. Everybody, everybody who's spoken up has been all for it, a lot of support. So I think, I think you're right that that support does exist. It's just quiet. It's not easily visible.
I think, actually, I think a lot of people have just kind of given up. You know, the town meeting is such a big hurdle for them that they just, they give up. They think that they can't, you know, it's not, it's not within their power to really influence things and
Well, and, and it's such a, such a corruption of the idea of town meeting. Cause theoretically, town meeting is the ultimate form of democracy. It's the one place where you, as the citizen, get to go and directly participate in the legislative body of the town and, and make laws and do the business of the town. And by having such a small minority of the, the voting population actually participating, we kind of move it away from being democracy and it gets into being a little bit of a plutocracy, or it's just a small group of people making decisions for everybody else. And sure, everybody theoretically can show up, but as a practical matter, they can't.
Yeah, I don't, I would never say to do away with town meeting. I think that the town meeting has a lot of really positive aspects to it. As you mentioned, anybody can go, anybody can speak up, anyone can, can bring an article to the town meeting. Uh, of all of which I think is great. And I think that anyone who really has something to say uh, and, and feels comfortable saying it in public could go. Uh, but I don't think that means that you need to exclude everybody else.
Now, what about, Chelmsford has a representative town meeting where, you know, they vote in people from their own neighborhoods to represent them at town meeting. What would you, what do you think about that style?
I would really have to look into that. I know that exists. I, I don't know how well it works. And, and I, I also don't know why you need to do that when you can actually have everybody vote, when it's so, I mean, procedurally, it's so easy to let everybody vote. It's not, it isn't that it's difficult to implement. It's that we have regulations and, and positions and so on that just are, are against it, stand in the way. So I'm not, I, I think you may ultimately wind up in that form if the town meeting continues the way it does here, just because the town is so big, it's, you know, it's, it could potentially be more representative, but, but if you take the case of Chelmsford, how many representatives do they have at that town?
Well, so that, that's an important, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, but I do know that a couple of years ago, that the Select Board, at the time, the Selectmen, commissioned a, a group to study this question of, of should we switch to town, a representative town meeting? And one of the things they found is that we would have to elect two hundred and sixty representatives from Westford. And, you know, that's more people than we get showing up to some town meetings. So
Well, but it's about the same number at town meeting. So you'd, you'd have a town meeting, but they would be elected as opposed to just the people who, uh, decided to go.
And then everybody who got elected would, would be obligated to attend. And so could you actually find two hundred and sixty representatives from the committee who would be willing to run for election and make that commitment? And then, you know, in the process, what does our ballot look like with two hundred and sixty elections on it? I mean, it, it would be split between the precincts, so it wouldn't be two hundred and sixty on every ballot, but and also tying into that, we're going to have to redistrict soon. Uh, the state has come back and said that we, um, in our most recent census, we have met the limits to need to add a, a seventh district. So that's a, a whole nother discussion coming down the pipeline.
I think that would be good to know, though, uh, how the representative town government, form of town government works out in these other towns. I mean, how many people do they have going to the meeting in Chelmsford? And, and do they actually have, we can't even, in this town, people don't even run for select. You know, you can't get one. So I, I don't know if you're going to get two hundred and sixty people to run to be a town meeting representative. Maybe are, I don't know, but, uh, I, it just would be, I, I don't know really, other than that, I know that that form exists. I don't really know much about how well it's worked out.
Something to look into, a little more, deeper, yeah.
Yep. Thanks for listening, folks. We hope this leaves you a little better informed about your town. If you liked this episode, tell YouTube to share it with your neighbors by hitting that like button. And tell us what you think about these stories in the comments below. Thanks to Nick for recording. Thanks to Bill for joining us and thanks to Joyce for telling us what's new in Westford.
Thanks for having me.
And thanks for having me.